Good evening. It's five o'clock. I would like to call the July 25th Planning Commission meeting to order. My name is Les Tillery and I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. There's maybe some here tonight who have never been to a Planning Commission meeting, so I'd like to take just a moment to give a brief overview of how the commission functions. Silence my cellphone. The Planning Commission consists of 12 regular members and two supernumerary members. Each member is a volunteer appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission is made up of two subcommittees, the zoning committee and the subdivision committee. Each regular member of the Planning Commission is assigned to one of these committees. Each committee meets separately from the Planning Commission meeting. The zoning committee meets on the second Wednesday of the month and the subdivision committee meets on the third Wednesday of the month. Both of those meetings are at 7:30 a.m. on the seventh floor of City Hall and these meetings are open to the public. The primary responsibilities of the Planning Commission are to recommend zoning ordinance amendments, annexation and zoning requests to the city council, to apply and adopt subdivision recommendations, to approve location and character and extent requests, to approve city master plans, to approve vacation of right-of-way requests, street name change requests, and plat vacation requests. The Planning Commission is supported by an excellent planning department which reviews each item before it comes to the commission to make sure it meets all the requirements of our ordinances, rules and regulation that apply to development projects throughout the city. So at this time, I'd like for the commission members to introduce themselves and we'll start down here on my far right.
Devin Keith.
Gary Whitley.
Carlos Matthews.
LaFrida Jordan.
Kyle Collins.
Peggy Richard.
I'm Les Tillery.
Sally Warden.
John McMullin.
Kelly Scrimshaw.
Jeffrey Rice.
Jim McGuffey, Planning Department.
And sitting in the back, we have Claudia Anderson and Michelle Jordan. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the adoption of minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adoption of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We'll move to the public hearings portion of our agenda and we have some guidelines we'd like for you to follow regarding your comments. If you would move to either one of the microphones at each podium, you can make your comments. We'd ask you to state your name and address for our records. We would ask that you keep your comments brief and to the point. If there are people to speak on a, if there's somebody else that's already spoken on a topic that you would like to speak about, we'd ask that you not repeat their comments, but if you have anything new, we would appreciate you sharing that with us. So, the first item in our public hearing is Friendship Commons, re-subdivision of lots one and two of Friends subdivision and we'll hear, Thomas will give us an introduction for each one.
Friendship Commons is located northeast city, south of Winchester Road and west of Homer Nance Road. This item is zone C4 and is overall 43.55 acres. This item was before you for layout in June of 2017.
Is there anyone here to speak on Friendship Commons?
Chairman, we received one letter to our office and were concerned with cross-access at the intersection of Winchester and Homer Nance, but this development is not going to interfere or change any of the access to that site. I just wanted to put that on record.
Okay. Yes ma'am. Please give us your name and address.
Teresa Chapman. I'm at 119 Off Lane. I think the original plat had said there were going to be some roads added. This is, I guess, is there the plat? Because I don't, I wasn't able to see the plat last week because I was out of town.
No problem.
So now that they've changed it, they've taken out the roads?
There has been no change to it. This is the second phase of it. As last month, it was, had been signed by all city engineers and all traffic engineering department in Huntsville Utilities. The issue why it did not move forward as far as construction is regarded is because there was no Madison County Water Authority signature. They have now retrieved, obtained their signature, so this now gives them the authorization to build. There are internal roads to this subdivision, but these will be internal private roads and they exist within the common area strips that are currently depicted here with approximately four accesses, access points from Winchester Road and one from the east and one to the west of Homer Nance.
Okay, so it's the same as it was last time?
Correct.
Okay. It just confused us when the letter came out and it said, "No roads."
Correct. Right, right. I think the original may have said roads, but...
It did, and so that's why we were confused by the letter. We're just making sure that, so everything is still the same as it was last month?
That would be correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's, we're good then.
Thanks. Is there anyone else here to speak on Friendship Commons? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item two is Madison Corners Phase Four, a re-subdivision of lot three A of Madison Corners Phase Three, a re-subdivision of lot three of Madison Corners Phase Two, a re-subdivision of lots one and three of Madison Corners subdivision, a minor.
The Madison Corners Phase Four is located northwest city, south of Highway 72, west and east of Balts Road. This item is currently zone C4 and is overall 2.9, 95 acres. Phase Three of Madison Corners was final platted in February of 2012 and...
Is there anyone here to comment on Madison Corners Phase Four? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item three is Maple Ridge Phase Three.
Maple Ridge Phase Three is located northwest city, north of Highway 72 West and west of Balts Road. This item is zone Residence Two A and is overall 49.9 acres. This subdivision is before you for a relayout. The original project, Maple Ridge Phase Two, was completed in August of 2009. This project then ties Heritage Brook from the west and Maple Ridge from the east to each other and also Knox Creek to the south. So there is full connectivity from all Stubber Road to and from each other.
Is there anyone here to comment on Maple Ridge Phase Three? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item four is Twin Creek Subdivision.
Twin Creek Subdivision is located northwest city, east of Indian Creek Road and south of Douglas Road. This item is zone Residence Two A and is overall 28.96 acres. This item was before you for a layout in June of 2017. This gives preliminary for the first phase of 59 lots. The layout was for overall 201 lots.
Is there anyone here to comment on Twin Creek Subdivision? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five is location, character and extent. Five A is The View at Burrit.
The View at Burrit is located northeast city, north of Governor's Drive and west of Montesano Boulevard. I'll turn over to Colin Orchid from Foresight for presentation.
All right, in the bottom right corner is the existing Baron Bluff Building and they are adding a wedding and event space to go alongside that and it's a 2,500 square foot concrete deck and it'll sit 250 to 300 people at their events, whether it's concert or wedding. There will be landscape and seating walls and there will be a glass railing along the observation of what they are calling The View. The character will match the current and existing buildings up there, which mainly the Baron Bluff Building with the stonework. It is at the very edge of the bluff and there is a 12-foot difference between the existing grade and the finished grade of the concrete deck. And if, we have a picture of the existing site conditions and that is where the space will be going, so.
Okay. Is there anyone here to comment on The View at Burrit? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five B is Alabama A&amp;M University Laundry Building.
Alabama A&amp;M University Laundry Building is located northeast city, south of Chase Road and west of Meridian Street. I'll turn over to Rob Van Pearson of Nolan Van Pearson for presentation.
Alabama A&amp;M recently took over the ownership of the apartment complex at the Normal Hill Apartments. They wanted to provide laundry service for their students and so we're building a small laundry building in the middle of the apartment complex using same type of shingles, siding, brick, basically matching the construction of the clubhouse, which is across the road from this.
Is there anyone here to comment on Alabama A&amp;M University Laundry Building? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item six is vacation of right-of-way, to vacate a portion of Town Center Drive.
The vacation of right-of-way is located in Providence, Maine, in transect six of Providence, Maine. This item is a, upon the building of the Hampton Inn, it was found a error as the ASB was provided, that there was approximately a one-foot error overbuilt into the right-of-way. At that time, the, we requested that, with the title being of a cloud, a cloud on the title of the property was to ever exchange hands, then we would like to vacate the right-of-way so that that does not exist.
Is there anyone here to comment on the vacation of a portion of Town Center Drive? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item seven, a street name change request, I'm sorry, a street name request. Street's never been named. Naming of unnamed street to Joe's Place.
This item is located southeast city, west of Whitesburg Drive, between Suri Road to the north and Kent Road to the south. Upon further inspection, planning staff has found in the research that the recorded plat was named Haven Manor and was plotted in platbook one, page 182. This document was recorded in 1942. A citizen by the name of Jennifer
annexed and zoned in 2007. Since then, the developer would like to go with a different
Jackson had brought that to our attention and would like to name this street Joe's Place.
Is there anyone here to comment on the naming of unnamed street to Joe's Place?
product type, so he has requested a rezoning change on this property from Residence One
Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. Item eight, we'll move to zoning public hearings.
B to Residence Two. This property is approximately 62 acres and this property is located on the north side of Cherry Tree Road and east of Eastlinger Drive.
Eight A is Wilson Cove Rezoning. And Ashley will give us a presentation on each one of Is there anyone here to comment on Wilson Cove Rezoning? Hearing none, the public these items. hearing is closed. Item eight B is Dunlop Rezoning.
This rezoning request is approximately 65.92 acres. This property is currently zoned planned industrial. This is the original zoning designation for this property. This item was originally introduced to zoning subcommittee during the June meeting for a zoning request of Residence Two A. Since then, the intended developer has decided that he would like to go with a different zoning designation, so it was introduced again this month to zoning committee for a Residence Two B zoning designation change. This property is located east of Wall Trianna and on the north side of Dunlop Boulevard.
Is there anyone here to comment on Dunlop Rezoning? Yes, sir.
My name is Julian Butler. I live at 628 Owens Drive. I am a lawyer and I'm here representing SCS, SES, which is located on Dunlop, a little to the west, I guess, almost across from this. SCS is a longstanding company, has been on the property for approximately 10 years. They reset helicopters and also reset drones. They work under contracts with not only the federal government, but private industry and many other governments. They have 617 employees, expect 150 more this year. They presently have approximately 100 helicopters on the property. Today, for example, four helicopters took off and eight landed. They normally, in a normal day, have six to eight landing and that's probably going to double with the contract they now have for Afghan, providing helicopters for Afghanistan. The problem is, when a helicopter comes in, you have rotor wash and that's the downdraft as the helicopter is coming in. The downdraft, the wash, can be up to 127 miles per hour, which mean if anybody was moving along Dunlop, at the time a helicopter comes in, they would be subject to 127 miles per hour, which would be deathly to a walker, a motorcycle, a bicycle, small automobile, and very destructive to a very large, even a very large automobile. I have with me tonight Doug Haygood and Russell Chun from SES and my law partner Joe Rich. As I said, SES has been in this location for 10 years. At the time, the property, the present owner bought the property, subject to seeking rezoning, was approximately two years ago. He was fully aware of the SES operation and fully aware of the problems caused. If you grant this rezoning, and as I understand, what is presently requested would allow multifamily dwellings and hotels, and that's, you know, you increase the traffic up and down Dunlop and it, as I say, could be catastrophic. Dunlap is a not very used road and again, the primary use of it is by SES. But SES is very opposed to this rezoning, not just for themselves, but for the public good. If this property is rezoned and if there were to be multifamily dwellings, a hotel, or anything that would materially increase the traffic along Dunlop, you would have a real public safety problem. Thank you.
My name is Louis Breland. I live at 15 Lake Forest Boulevard, Huntsville, Alabama. I've been developing this area of land for probably the last 30 years, all of Edgewater. All the residential that we developed around this property, you can see every development, every community, except for that one multifamily apartment complex that adjoins us, that joins the property. I did not build, Mr. Drake built that, but I was part of the developer with Wayne Bonner. This has been a long-time residential area. My friend, Mr. Butler, had kind of totally exaggerated what goes on there. I wouldn't, it'd take a long time to debate all the untruths he said a while ago, but he is my friend. But the whole character of this thing has changed for many, many years. When we bought the property, In图Graff, they've had it to develop and they didn't develop it as office because it's all changed. The whole world has changed there. Where SES sits is a four-lane divided highway. It's been there. It's part of the major road plan for the city of Huntsville. It's designed to carry 32,000 cars a day. There's cars use it every day and there's, and I'm there, I don't know how many times a day, I might see a helicopter come in once a month. There's helicopters land on top of the hospital. There's helicopters landing in the street. There's helicopters fly all over the city. So it's not a war going on out there. Don't listen to that. But the character of the property's changed. Everything around this residential, and if you look at one subdivision here to the south, it's a lot closer to SES than the property where asked to be rezoned. It's much closer and it's, you know, thousands of lots we put in there and nobody's ever had an issue. And we want to be good neighbors to SES. SES is a very valuable part of this community. We respect those. Nobody loves jobs more than a home builder and developer. And then we would never do anything that we would even be, would be up here that we thought it had an infringement on SES. We're all part of the community and as they are. So I respectfully ask that, look at, all the characters change. It fits right in with today's times. The zoning does allow for a townhouse. I see more single-family townhouses, not hotels and that kind of stuff there. But the zoning, I think the city had just passed, not too long ago, allows for that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to speak on Dunlop? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Joe Rich, 1600 West Point Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. I can't let that go and responded to about one a month. I encourage all of you to go out there and look. For example, back two or three years ago, there'd been some money that the state was about to spend on Dunlop Road. We requested John Cooper, the ALDOT director from this area, to come and see what happens and we said it is dangerous. He got out there, I believe he brought Matt McCutcheon, I think also at that time Speaker Hubbard came with him. They went out there and several helicopters came in and he just about was blown backwards. He said, "This is dangerous. It's not only just the downwash, it's the pebbles and things that come up." But to sit there and say there's one a month when they are averaging eight, six to eight now, soon to be about twice that number, and that doesn't include the takeoffs, but that's not correct. It is very busy and getting busier and creating a lot of good jobs. Thank you.
Joey CC, 1351 Stonehurst Drive, Huntsville, Alabama. I think the point that I want to make, rather than the number of helicopters that are there, is that that Dunlop Road is a public road. There's a public road that the public is right now able to travel up and down that road. If it's unsafe for one car, it's unsafe for multiple cars. If it's unsafe for multiple cars, it's unsafe for one car. There is no safety issue as a result of these helicopters or else I'm sure they would not be flying over this openly public road. If you look across this street from Dunlop Boulevard, from the SES plant, you've got multiple property owners there that have several different businesses. All of those folks, I'm sure at some point would like to develop their land. In图Graff, of course, has got up for sale. The portion just to the west of our site, they have several different land users that have been in looking at that site. All of those would require cars to drive up and down an open public road that is a four-lane divided highway. So I'm assuming the city of Huntsville has not allowed a use along an open four-lane public road that is a danger to walkers. It's a danger to vehicles. Mr. Butler's told us it's very, very dangerous for cars, trucks, people walking, bikers. There's no signs out there. There's no sign that says it's dangerous to drive up and down Dunlop Boulevard. There's no sign that says, "Don't walk on Dunlop Boulevard." There's a helicopter that might, you know, impact your, your safety and your health. So, you know, again, I think what we're looking at here is something that's a very, a better and higher use for this piece of property. There are facilities very much like SES around the country that have helicopters in and out that manage similar issues very well with neighbors and adjoining places. If you go into the northeast of the United States, there's multiple places that have helicopter traffic in and out. So, again, there are ways that this can be handled. There are different pieces of, different places on that piece of property where helicopters can land, but at the end of the day, we are talking about an open public road, a two-lane, four-lane divided highway that is open to traffic today with no safety issues whatsoever. There's never been a safety complaint that I've heard of from citizens, from travelers, from motorists out there. You've got multiple property owners that own property adjoining that same road, that same public four-lane divided highway, that I think if you, you know, take this action based on those comments, you're going to tell those folks they can't develop their land on, you know, that they've purchased along this road. So I think we need to be very careful to look at, you know, not only kind of what, what we've heard here today, but the, the underlying facts of the status of that road.
Jeff Mullins, I'm at 5501 Whitesburg Drive, also the engineer for Breland Development, also the engineer on the Kellner Boulevard Road Extension. This piece of property has multiple access points, one of them being a future extension that will come from, from traverse the property north to south. So, like I say, we do travel that road a lot and I guess I was interested to get an attorney to admit that there's a dangerous situation, so I hope nobody has a wreck out there and sues them. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. You know, I can't stay out of this. I just want to say that...
Give us your name, Ms. Reed.
Jackie Reed, Jack Coleman Drive.
Thank you.
You know, use some common sense. I, I know how it works. I've been watching it way too long, but why do you want to even change it? Leave it alone. If there's some complaints and some concerns and traffic needs to go out there and do their job and put in dangers if it is, and the city just needs to get more involved and think about the things that's going on around them, in my opinion. If they say it's dangerous, the city needs to get out there and post some signs and help. But helicopters, I don't want them that close to my house. But it's, it's, if you change the zoning, leave it just exactly like it is. I'd be afraid to zone. I'm warning you like I did at the Whitesburg Estates the other night. When I hear stuff like this, it comes in here. I'm thankful, I'm not sitting up there on that board. Who would be responsible if something happens? Is it you all, the city of Huntsville? We'll answer that when we get there, but thank you. I'd do second thoughts before I'd change the zoning on this.
Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Chun. I actually live in Morgan County. I'm one of the owners of SES. We bought this property approximately 10 years ago. It was the old Dunlop tire. A lot of people call it the Dumplop, said it couldn't be used for anything. We had visions that it could be used and become a center of excellence for aviation. Had a dinner meeting with Senator Shelby in 1999. He said, "You need to get into aviation, Russell, because there's hundreds of millions of dollars' worth of work. It comes through Huntsville and goes out and it goes to Connecticut, it goes to Texas, it goes to Arizona, it goes other places, but it doesn't stay in Huntsville. Nobody's really doing aviation work in Huntsville." So we started doing that. A little bit of correction on some things. Of the 600-plus that was mentioned, those are just at Dunlop. We have a little under 1,000 employees in Huntsville. Our salaries average is about 50,000 a year. We have what's called the Cadillac Benefit Program. Our people are well taken care of. There's very few people traveling Dunlop Boulevard in a day. You go out there, there's a few cars, but very little. But there's a lot of helicopter flights. It's very erroneous to say a few a month. It's more like four to eight a day and it's going to double. The other thing I want you to be aware of is, we had the Israelis here today. We're getting ready to sign a contract with the nation of Israel to rebuild Black Hawks for them. For the US government, we're going to be building about 180 Black Hawks for Afghanistan. All those will have to be tested. And what some people don't know, we just signed a contract with the Navy and we're going to start having V-22 helicopters come in. I don't know if you've ever seen a V-22 or not. They vertical take off, then the blades go forward and it flies in that manner. It's a very large helicopter, has a lot of downdraft. As a matter of fact, we're going to have to have special coating on our landing pads at the west end of the building because the Navy discovered after they started using it and the Navy and the Marines, it would actually melt the paint off the ships when it landed on. So yes, there is a lot of danger. The Chinooks, we had to build a separate landing pad behind our building because Chinook landing in front would blow the fence down. So if you have cars, bicycles, motorcycles, or people out there on Dunlop, yes, there is great danger for them because the downdraft is enormous when some of these helicopters come in and the noise level. So to correct some of the things, yes, SES, we want to be a good citizen of Huntsville, provide employment... here today. We're getting ready to sign a contract with the nation of Israel to rebuild Black Hawks for them. For the U.S. government, we're going to be building about a hundred and eighty Black Hawks for Afghanistan. All those will have to be tested. And what some people don't know, we just signed a contract with the Navy, and we're going to start having V-22 helicopters come in. I don't know if you've ever seen a V-22 or not. They vertical take off, then the blades go forward and it flies in that manner. It's a very large helicopter, has a lot of downdraft. As a matter of fact, we're going to have to have special coating on our landing pads at the west end of the building because the Navy discovered after they started using it and the Navy and the Marines, it would actually melt the paint off of the ships when it landed on. So yes, there is a lot of danger. The Chinooks, we had to build a separate landing pad behind our building because Chinook landing in front would blow the fence down. So if you have cars, bicycles, motorcycles, or people out there on Dunlop, yes, there is great danger for them. Because the downdraft is enormous when some of these helicopters come in and the noise level. So to correct some of the things, yes, SES, we want to be a good citizen of Huntsville, provide employment. And we're going to add between a hundred and fifty and two hundred more people before this year's over. And you look at the average salary of businesses you're bringing into Huntsville, it's not fifty thousand a year plus complete paid benefit packages. Health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, disability insurance. We do all those things. So SES wants to be a good citizen of Huntsville, but we're located right here. The PMs come by every day, say they love it because we're close to Redstone Arsenal, and that's where the work starts. So we need to have this settled so that there's not housing, hotels, apartments, or other developments there that's going to be right down the street from where we're doing our work.
Is there anyone else to comment on Dunlop rezoning? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Item eight C is Aurora, uh, Aurora zoning.
This item is newly annexed property. This property is located on the east side of U.S. Highway two thirty-one south and on the south side of Bob Wallace Avenue. This property is approximately five point four seven acres. Planning staff would like to propose a zoning designation of Highway Business C four, uh, zoning district for this property. This property is adjacent to light industry as well as heavy industry, but planning staff has not used either of those zoning designations in over the past ten years. So C four is the most appropriate for this site.
Is there anyone here to comment on Aurora zoning? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Item eight D is zoning ordinance amendment, Board of Zoning Adjustment Renewals.
This proposed ordinance renewal, uh, excuse me, this proposed zoning, uh, amendment is concerning, uh, renewals for Board of Zoning Adjustment concerning primarily alcohol sales as well as, uh, expand, excuse me, um, expanded hours for alcohol sales in our neighborhood business C one and C two districts as well as entertainment. Currently, uh, those particular items that request these variances or special exceptions have to go to the Board of Zoning Adjustment on an annual basis to demonstrate that they're not having any issues. Planning staff would like to relax, uh, those restrictions from an annual basis to every three years. And that will be based on the Board of Zoning Adjustment discretion, and they can add any additional, um, conditions that they may see fit, uh, for each use.
Is there anyone here to comment on the zoning ordinance amendment for the Board of Zoning Adjustment Renewal? Hearing none. The public hearing is closed. Okay, moving to the next portion of our agenda is the subdivision. I'd ask Kyle Collins, the chair of our subdivision committee, to provide the subdivision report.
Thank you, Chairman. The subdivision committee met about an hour ago today, July twenty-fifth, and these are our recommendations. Uh, item number one is Friendship Commons, a re-subdivision of lots one and two, a friend subdivision. The committee recommends preliminary approval on eleven lots. And Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Still move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, heights at, uh, Montesano Apartments, formerly Hampton Falls Phase Two. The committee recommends relayout and repliminary approval on a hundred and seventy-two units.
Moved to approve, second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Madison Corners Phase Four, re-subdivision of Lot Three A of Madison Corners Phase Three, re-subdivision of Lot Three of Madison Corners Phase Two, re-subdivision of lots one and three of Madison Corners, subdivision a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line and the utility and drainage easement along the north side of Lot Two.
Is there a motion?
Still move.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Maple Ridge, Ridge Phase Three. The committee recommends relayout approval on a hundred and seventy-six lots with a waiver on the non-radiol lot line between lots fourteen fifteen, fifty-four, and the rear of forty-nine through fifty-three, between fifty-eight, fifty-nine, fifty-nine, sixty, one sixteen, and one seventeen, one twenty-one and one twenty-two, one thirty-two, and the rear of one twenty-eight through one thirty-one, and one fifty-one, and the rear of one fifty-two through one fifty-three.
Moved to approve, second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five is a retreat at Goose Creek, presented for final approval on thirty-four lots.
Jim, is it an order for final?
Yes, sir, with improvements in sidewalks to be installed July twenty, two thousand eighteen.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six is Twin Creek Subdivision. The committee recommends preliminary approval on fifty-nine lots.
Still move.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next portion of, portion of our agenda is location, character, and extent.
Item number one, the view at Burett. Public hearing was held.
Move to approve, second.
Is there any discussion? I have a question. Uh, is there a, I saw some drawings of plans. Was there any elevations showing materials or colors?
Yes.
No.
But the charac, you said the character was intended to be similar to the Bluff Building? So you'd match the stone colors? Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, Alabama A&amp;M University Laundry Building. The public hearing was held.
Moved to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Part four of our agenda is vacation of right-of-way.
Vacated portion of Town Center Drive, east of Providence Main Street. Public hearing was held.
Is there a mo-
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chair, I'd like to, uh, Thomas, this property was built, was there any type of city inspection or what processes are in place? Because the, the rationale given was that it was built over the right-of-way. Was that not checked before? Or did they do that during construction and there was no inspection? Or where, where's the error in this?
I'm not to say who, I don't know who exactly made the error, error, but there was some error within the contracting. Um, I'm not, can't place blame on any particular, um, entity, but these type of things happen. Um, there are sometimes houses that are the, um, the houses built one foot in a direction that it was not. There was some type of error made in the field. Um, there, if I'm not mistaken, um, engineering would have more assessment as far as like, I don't think that there's an inspect, inspection as far as like, that's why you do the ASB build at the end.
So is there a penalty?
So the ASB build shows that, that this is the error in the, in the draft to show that the building or that the, um, utilities or things are in the appropriate place that they should, they should be. Um, maybe Rusty Blackwell of GMC could potentially explain more if there was something-
Is there someone here from city engineering?
We could also discuss in Providence, in this particular lot, there's a zero structure setback. A lot of times, most zoning districts have a definitive foot set, setback. And so in this case, with any error, it would go into the right-of-way. Um, we discovered that towards the end as they did inspections. Uh, it's very close. I mean, we're talking about a foot or less here, which is not a, a large distance when you have a multi-story building. Uh, the ASB build called it at the end and it's before us. Most of the time, these cases go before the Board of Zoning Adjustment for variances. So they don't come before this body, uh, because the planning commission, you know, only sees right-of-way vacations. This case, since there's a zero setback, it encroached into the right-of-way.
I understand the zero setback, but my question is, is, is there a fine? Is there a penalty against the developer or the hotel? I mean, i- if you start with these kind of errors and, you know, there's no accountability, how do you keep this in line?
Well, I think for the developer, the owner, uh, and the, and the builder, there's certainly penalties on the private side due to the closings, due to the time that it's taken for him to get his title clear, and, and the overall cost associated with the process on our end to remedy his problem. Uh, he has no incentive to do this, uh, and certainly doesn't look good on his record moving forward for his next project. So I think it, it almost manages itself on the side of the builder to make sure he does his job correctly. In this case, it was just an error he made.
Pretty extensive error. I mean, how, this building is, is it four or five stories? And how, how, what's the length of it or?
Yeah, it's a four or five-story building. Uh, the setback, the, the furthest encroachment is near the intersection. As it works its way down the street, the setback works its way down to four inches or so. So it's at an angle of coming from the corner of the intersection.
Any further discussion? All in favor of vacating the right-of, a portion of the right-of-way, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, item, uh, part five of our agenda is a street name request.
The naming of the unnamed street to Joe's Place, the public hearing was held.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Uh, currently, I would like to know, is the city currently maintaining this? I- is it fully paved or?
Yes, it is, uh, it is fully paved, has been operating for, since nineteen forty-two.
Okay, and there is no street sign there currently, so then the city would have to put a street sign there.
There is a, currently a stop sign that exists there, but there is no street sign.
Uh, and then the, the actual name, how was that selected?
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead, tell us the story you told it.
All right. So, uh, this was brought to our attention by a lovely citizen by the name of Jennifer Jackson. In two thousand and twelve, Ms. Jackson found that there was another street that was, uh, not named. This street was named Arnel, Arlene Street. Um, so Ms. Jackson named the street after a close friend of hers. Ms. Jackson now is, um, has met with, uh, Mr. Joe Webster. Mayor Arlene and Joe are now dating. And this street, Mr. Joe Webster lives off of Suri Street. She found this particular street, found that it should be, it does not have a name, and found that he, it should have a name, and requested to name it Joe's Place. Tom Cisco of Traffic Engineering then find that Joe's, uh, Joe's Place does not exist within Madison County whatsoever, and so it sought that we can name this street Joe's Place.
Does it intersect with Arnel?
No, it does not.
Arlene, sorry.
No, it, no, it does not, sir. They're just dating. They're just dating, sir.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Uh, all in favor of naming an unnamed street to Joe's Place, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item, uh, part, part six of our zoning, uh, of our agenda is the zoning, uh, report. I'd ask Sally Warden, our chair of our zoning committee, to give us her report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The zoning committee met on July the twelfth and has the following to report. Uh, first was the Wilson Cove rezoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
Still move.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, um, so we need to go back and revise that motion.
Sorry.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next from the zoning committee report is the Dunlop rezoning, and the public hel, um, hearing was held this evening. For the purposes of discussion, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Hang on, Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself from this vote.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself also.
Okay.
I have a question.
Okay, let me, let me check, make sure we, we maintain a quorum with those two recusals.
Well, I think he, he- Oh, oh, you, okay. Uh, my question is, um, on the land that was there, what is the flight pattern? Is the flight, do the helicopters fly over the land that we're talking about being rezoned? Okay.
Well, did that answer your question, Carla?
I guess, I mean, we're, it sounds like we're going to have two different answers to the same question, so.
Can you show the aerial, yes.
The helicopters fly around the airport, so they're everywhere.
Okay, so, uh, let us, let's rephrase the question.
So can you state if they fly, they hover in a given time and when you're testing?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We're talking about military helicopters. We're not talking about small, commercial helicopters that land on top of a hospital or something like that. We're talking about huge helicopters with enormous downdraft and heat, especially when we bring the V-22s.
Is, is there a defined flight plan or are the pilots allowed to move around anywhere? I mean, is there an approach and a, and a takeoff direction?
Most of it is from the north, but they could hover over to this area here when they take off. But most of them come in from the north. We have to have approval from the airport.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
That's, that's, I've met with FAA, we've all met it. That's, what he's saying, Mr. ridiculous. What are you, what are you saying over here?
Ma- Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Our chairperson. I thought Sally was carrying it. I'm sorry. Is it possible that we can rescind the last motion and study this more before we?
Well, as I stated, for the purpose of discussion, we really can't even discuss this. Robert's Rules of Order require that we have a motion to approve before we even start talking about it, and that's why I made the motion, actually, is so we could have some healthy discussion. Okay, um, can I make a comment, sir?
Certainly.
All right, thank you. As chairman of the zoning committee, I just want to give a little bit of history about, um, our discussions at this. I know a lot of you guys haven't had the, had the privilege of sitting at all the zoning committee meetings, but we, um, have actually discussed this particular rezoning request now for two months. It first came in as R-two-A, um, and we discussed it then. We had very healthy discussion with it two months ago, and we had some serious concerns. Uh, then the, um, property owner came back and changed the rezoning request to two-B, which caused us even more serious concerns as that would have increased the traffic, um, and the amount of people coming up and down, up and down the roads. What our main concern was, was how these residential, this residential area was going to have access. Um, what was the concern was that in order to get to their homes, they were going to have to drive through an industrial area. That was the only way to access this property. This is the first time we've had the opportunity to have the property owners here to answer any questions. Um, but, um, just so you know, we have discussed this thoroughly at the, at the, um, zoning committee level and had serious concerns if this was appropriate zoning for this property.
Has the city done any, uh, examination in the area to find out if it is dangerous from the city's point of view?
Yeah, I mean, we've certainly looked at, you know, anytime there's an industrial park, if you want any users in the park other than users that are working there. I think that's the first thing you need to think about is, are the people that are driving in the park people that are there for work or they're there for leisure? Or what are they there for? In this case, you have helicopters near the road. Uh, it's an approved landing site by the police department. Uh, the state's worked with us. The director of, you know, the roads in the state's worked with us. Our city engineers have looked at this. So we understand the gravity and the importance of the location of these pads and their proximity to the road. So we're fully aware of what's going on there. We have certainly studied it.
Can we, can someone point out where the pads are on that image there?
Yes, they're all north of the building. Um, if you, we could take the colors off, uh, drag the, you can see them right, right there. The helicopters are to the right. Go to the right, Ashley.
My other right.
Keep going to the right. No, keep going to the right. Right there, zoom in.
Almost at the center of the building.
See where that H is?
See the H?
I don't see.
On the north of the building, there's an H. Right there.
Alright, go the left a little bit, right there.
My other H.
Right there. Now, for the Chinook, go then to the west end of the building, other way, I'm sorry, east end. Okay. At the east end of the building.
Getting ready to build some pads.
We have to build another landing pad because Chinooks cannot land in the front, they'll blow the fence down as they land with a hundred and twenty mile per hour downdraft. Right there, see that landing pad? We have to build it separate, uh, because a Chinook will blow the fence down.
Now, can you zoom out from that area and show where the land piece is that, that's being rezoned? Do we know how approximately, how far that is from where that new landing pad is going to be built?
If, if I can make a comment, I know from the city's perspective, it is, yes, we're concerned about the proximity, but it's really about the ingress and egress. We don't want a development that we really have no idea to approve something, that we don't know how people are gonna get in and out of this particular development. So if you're gonna have more cars dumping onto Dunlop, that changes the scenario. Right now, SES has made a major financial investment when they took on this property and hired these employees, and that road is, it's industrial and there's not many cars on it. It's really a destination. Cars coming in and out for this particular plant. If you have a residential neighborhood that is suddenly deciding to tie, and we don't know that, if that's the plan that wants to tie into Dunlop, then you've got a whole nother situation.
So the question is, if this is an industrial park, are we going to force it to stay an industrial park? Because that's what you're saying by the rezoning, is that it will stay an industrial park. Is that correct?
It'll stay, um, planned industrial. That's what is currently zoned, is planned industrial.
So it will stay an industrial park, if that's, that's, that's the correct statement?
I'm sorry, Mr. Breland, Mr. Breland, wait, let me interrupt you, Mr. Breland, we're. Let me interrupt you. We'll, we'll recognize you if we, I need, need input from you. We will recognize, we're, we're having discussion amongst ourselves. We'll recognize you if we have a question for you.
Well, another comment I just want to make sure is clear from the, from the zoning committee perspective is, we had a lot of discussion and a lot of serious concerns, and that was before we heard anything we heard tonight about the particular helicopter issues and downdraft. It really had to do not as, not as much with that. This just sort of adds to that. Um, but it was more how those residents were even going to access that property without driving through a heavy industrial area to get there. As you see, all that other R two around there, that, they are not driving through industrial areas to get there.
Alright, so assuming that we stick to that point, is there any plan to have another way to ingress and egress from that area?
Mr. Mullins, can you answer that question for us?
I can. Um, we got connections to the north, and, and as part of the Atrip, one of the Atrip-funded projects, uh, we are extending Kellner Road, which is a road to the south. Uh, it's a block south of Dunlop. You might zoom out a little bit. We've completed the environmental studies to extend that road all the way up, all the way to the north. It'll actually be a connector that will go all the way through and actually go all the way to Zert Road. If you come off the end right there, Ashley, where you have your mouse, a little bit to the left, the road turns and goes to the north, bisects around the corner of the, just to the west of that residential subdivision, and pretty much goes sort of along the existing Dunlop Boulevard. Um, it will bisect the property that way.
That's a viable route. I think we would feel more comfortable waiting to see that happen and to see a plan that commits that instead of rezoning with, we don't, we don't have anything in writing. We don't have anything.
Les, if I could say one more thing. After, after hearing the discussion tonight, um, we would be in favor of, of a thirty-day table to, to respond and also to provide the Kellner Road layout. I don't, I know the engineering has seen it, but I'm not sure how many people in Planning Department have seen that layout. Um, give us an opportunity to respond and, and provide those questions, answers.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, Jim, with the conversation that we heard about them increasing the amount of flights in and flights out, at what point do we become, I guess, concerned? Of course, we want them increased, but at what point is that number, you know, they go from six to eight and eight to sixteen? I know, you know, and I guess I'm just throwing this out there from my own perspective. None of us will become Black Hawk experts, I don't know how long we sit up here, so we have to trust somebody at some point. Um, what point do we put something maybe on the road, I don't know how they do when the railroad comes through, that says a railroad's coming through? How often is often, or have we had that number yet, of which we would ask them to tell us, hey, if you're getting a sixteen flights a day, we need to assess what this road's usage is? Cause I imagine if they increase in their capacity, Dunlop's usage probably becomes something else, so that we have absolutely no issue, point blank, period.
Yes, sir. The Chief of Police approves the, the location of the heliport, and I think he could correspond with, with the guys at SES to see how many planes or helicopters are, are landing there. Uh, certainly work with our Traffic Engineering Department to see, you know, when signage is needed, if it's needed now, and, and to make sure it's safe. That's, that's the most important thing here, is do we have a safe road?
And I, I guess my point to everybody on the, well, how I see it, as we did discuss it in the last one, is that, you know, we don't want to continue to increase and then eventually say, well, we should have not rezoned it. You know, at some point, it might be twenty flights. I don't know what their capacity is, I guess my point is. So it's just something I guess we, we have to consider now before we put, and, uh, you know, five houses up there, whatever it is. If you increase the amount of cars on the road, but they don't decrease the amount of flights coming in, at some point, their flight capacity increases, and we have already made the decision to put more cars on the road, or more people on the road, whatever it is. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Chair, uh, do we have any, uh, anyone from SES? Can you tell us the R two neighborhood there, the, the rear side of the reserve? Have you received any complaints, uh, regarding noise, uh, downdraft, updraft, uh, since you installed that other pad for the Chinooks? If so, are you li- are you collecting those complaints, or has the city fielded any of those, um, in any of these years? Can anyone share that information?
Yeah, we've not received any either, Mr. Wheelie. I can tell you that that piece of property, the furthest west zone residential property, was rezoned roughly two thousand and five from planned industrial. Um, so it, at one time was that bluish color as well, but you can see that all their connection goes east. They actually had to build a bridge across, across the waterway there to access the site, uh, which all goes to Zert Road. And this property to the north in question here tonight, if we get to a residential zoning, you're gonna have to go through an industrially zoned district for the use. Going north is Madison, and that is, uh, some property that Mr. Breland does own, that he's looking to develop, a mixed-use development. And there are opportunities for connection there as well, but since it's in Madison, we don't have the authority for, for tying in at this body.
Now, Mr. Mullins has offered that they will, i- i- with the continuance, that they would come back with a road proposal through these, this subdivision, through this, this bridge you just mentioned. My next question then goes to, of this proposal, are there any stub roads in that current R two that would tie to this proposed area, uh, Ashley? Are there any stub roads in, that could, could get them there?
There are not.
I don't believe there are.
There are no stub roads?
No.
Okay.
And, and this, uh, proposed road from the south, um, I noticed that it still has to go through the planned industrial, Kel- Kellner Road still has to go through that industrial area to get, um, where it turns north?
It does.
So a continuance, um, if they have a, a plan for the, for this new road, it, it still has the same problems that we have now.
And, and as I understood it, Mr. Mullins, that the proposed Kellner extension goes between those two subdivisions, not behind it. Did I hear that correctly?
It's on the west end.
Yes, it does. It cuts that corner right there, it turns and goes north. And, and what is zoned to the north in Madison, that is a mixed-use zoning that allows single-family, allows hotels, it allows, and that's, that's reasonable. You know, we, the mixed-use zoning next to them makes more sense to have a, a residential buffer next to that mixed-use zoning. Also, for the residents east there at Edgewater, it makes more, you know, they don't want an industrial use in their back door either. Uh, so it provides the existing Huntsville residents a buffer before they get to the industrial area.
Uh, okay, thank you, Mr. Mullins. Is the city committed, uh, already to this Kellner, uh, extension financially? Do we have, I mean, are we, is that on the books?
That was funded by, by the Governor about two years ago. It was Atrip-funded project. It's actually a Madison County and the City of Madison project. It's really weird. It, it goes through all three entities. It's being managed by the Madison County, but funds are in place to construct the road.
So once the road is built out, who is responsible for maintaining it in the future?
It'll have to be a, uh, because it's inside the City of Huntsville. It, the road continues on, like I say, all the way to Zert Road is, is part of it. Uh, but the part in Huntsville will have to be maintained by the City of Huntsville. And it's, it's gone through the NPO process, it's, it's on the books, it's a part of the, uh, street plan. And like I say, we received, we had final, had a Fonzie about three or four months ago. We got our environmental clearance taken care of, now we're proceeding with design.
Jim, so regardless of this zoning, this Kellner extension is coming. Am I correct?
The funding's there. Um, there's still some work to be done. Uh, Mr. Mullins knows, knows how the project works in terms of building a road and all the multiple agencies involved in this project. Uh, but it's, it's been discussed, certainly.
And it's in the long-term plan, though. It's not in the short.
I don't know the time, uh, for bid, build, and finish.
But actually notwithstanding that, the, this concern about residential or, and having to drive through industrial would still be there. That doesn't, as you can see, the other R twos, that was our, that was our big discussion, was that all the other R twos around there had access straight onto Zert, or straight the other direction, straight. And that's still taking all that residential traffic back through the industrial area on Kellner, regardless of the helicopter issue.
Can, can someone offer the timeline? Uh, SES, uh, moved here ten years ago. Uh, R two, I think I heard you say was rezoned in two thousand and five, which was prior.
Two thousand and five, two thousand and six. Um, the earliest rezoning in this area was in nineteen eighty-five. All of this area was historically planned industrial, which was the original zoning designation, and that was prior to any development in this cluster.
Okay, and then the four lane, there was some discussion about the four lane north of SES. Was that four lane when Dunlop was here, or was it, had been since SES moved?
It existed when they moved there, yes.
Okay. Yes, sir. Mr. Rich, Mr. Rich. Mr. Rich, would you mind going to the microphone and repeating all that?
First is in, they moved in or started, they started trying, they rented the buildings initially. And that was in two thousand and four, but the buildings were such horrible shape, they would not have been able to do the kind of work. So it's actually before the time period. They moved in in two thousand and five, I think, the first building. The second thing, when I was referring to the change, it was announced that they were gonna put this Atrip money, I think it was ten million dollars, in Dunlop. That's when we contacted, uh, Director Cooper, and he came up here, and that's when we had that demonstration. He concluded that it would be unsafe, and at that point, they said, we're gonna have to move it elsewhere, and they moved it to Kellner Road. So that is the situation, and he again, is because he witnessed firsthand the power of those helicopters coming in.
Mr. Brilliant, Breland.
Under planned industrial, I guess we could put two or three thousand jobs there, and nobody would be able to go outside. I, I don't wanna be up here saying, but this is just untrue. That's why I asked, asked for a third day. What he's saying is not true. I was in those meetings with Mr. Cooper. It's not true what he just told you. But if we went out there and built a factory like SES, we put two, three thousand hu- uh, people working there. And to the north, there's five major highways. You've got, uh, Integra Way, you've got Interpro Way, you've got Zert Road, you've got New Interstate Ramp. I would doubt that residential development, five percent would ever use this road to start with. You've got five major highways coming in this property. But I do request that, that is such, I've heard such misinformation. We're glad to come back, uh, Ms. Grimcher, with, uh, accurate information, so that this planning mission is not disseminated false information. But according to SES, I mean, it's not safe for anybody to live anywhere around here. Uh, uh, maybe it's, it needs to be FAA investigation. Uh, but if we put three thousand jobs, can those people work there safely? Uh, versus two or three hundred homes. Uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, um, petitioner has, has, um, offered that we could continue this. So we'll put that on the table, uh, as, as an option.
Number one, there's a motion.
There's a motion.
And I, I question what we're gonna learn in thirty days.
Which is my original, Chairman, if you might, like, we will never become experts, and it is hard to commission a third-party perspective on who is right and who is wrong. And I don't think, if I had to say, the City Council would approve a third-party perspective on that. So, yeah, I mean, I know it is tough, but I just think we need to be cognizant of that. If we go down that road of, let us do more research, we will all be getting two sides of one coin, so.
Okay, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, motion is denied.
Mr. Chairman, next is the Aurora zoning, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And the last of the zoning committee recommendations is the zoning ordinance amendment, and that's the Board of Zoning Adjustment Renewals to amend zoning ordinance Article ninety-two dash Board of Adjustment, Section ninety-two point five, Powers and Duties, subsection ninety-two point five point three, permitted uses as special exceptions by amending subsection ninety-two point five point three eighteen and subsection ninety-two point five point three thirty-six to update the Board of Zoning Adjustment Approval Term Limits, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Um, Ashley, I understand that part of the reason for this is that, uh, that the Board of Zoning Adjustment Meetings get rather lengthy, and this will take some of the workload off of them from having to review these on a yearly basis?
Yes, um, that's been a planning staff initiative over the past few years, is to try and lessen, um, as much of the load on variances and special exceptions as possible. So we hope that reviewing these on a three-year basis versus on an annual basis will assist.
And also, one of the questions that was answered during the zoning committee discussions on this was if there were ever any issues with anyone in getting their license renewed. The police had complaints and things like that, that there was the discretion to require them to have them more, their renewals more regularly than every three years. So there was that stop guard.
Okay, um, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, part seven of our agenda is invocation and extension of bonds.
Move to approve.
Jim?
The staff recommends invocation of items one through five.
Move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our agenda. Uh, our meeting is adjourned.